Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We shall have a roll call, please, Carolina.
Social member, Corrells?
Yes.
Goldie?
Yes.
Miller?
Goldison?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. All right. Greetings, and once again, we will start with Mayor Waller's quote for the day. Today's quote comes from Ms. Maya Angelo. And it goes like this. If you don't like something, change it. If you can't change it, change your attitude. Okay, we shall move on to approval of our agenda for tonight. I want to point out, just first of all, before I turn it over to the council, I'll point out a few additions that we need to, and changes, I guess, that we need to make. First, change would be, under item A, under petitions, requests, and communications. Tatori Marion, she canceled, so we're gonna move her probably to the next meeting. So we won't have that tonight. And then, under other business, I want you to add a couple of things here. We have a fall mayor's recap that's gonna be provided by Mayor Waller's. And then, we have, we'd like to discuss a date for our work session regarding freshen. So we'll set a date for that. And then, under citizens' comments, the only request we had was from Annette Watson. So you can add her, under citizens' comments.
Mayor Waller, I forgot to call, I'm sorry. Could I be under citizens' comments?
City manager, what do you think?
Because you're calling.
Sure.
Thank you.
So we will add Mary Elizabeth also.
Mr. Mayor, I would also like to make a citizens' comment, I also forgot to call.
You want to be on citizens' comments?
I do.
Okay. We will add Joe Glassroot as well. Okay, so we have three additional people there, or two additional, three that I would like to speak. Would there be any other additions or corrections from members of the council? Just wanted to get, just a kind of a heads up on a few things as we move along here. As we get down into the consent agenda, we're gonna be talking about pay estimates. So the council knows Jeff Kuhn is here, and he would be available to answer any questions you may have before you take action on those particular pay estimates. And then, when we get down into ordinances and resolutions, Ryan is here for more, and he's gonna be available and give us a breakdown on those two task orders. And then, under item G there, Nick from Ellers is here also to answer our questions there. Just kinda wanted to give you a heads up on how that's gonna play out here, so. Any other additions or corrections from members of the council?
Did we, we decided to move citizen's comments to the end of the agenda?
Yes, we did.
We did?
Was I incorrect in that assumption, or?
I don't know if we, I guess we can do it that way, I guess. Doesn't make too much difference, as long as, as long as the citizens are okay with it. You know what I mean? I just, I didn't know at our last meeting if we had made that decision, or if we were just discussing it. What did you think there, Zach?
I was not at the last meeting.
Oh, you were?
Yeah.
What did you think?
I didn't know we, like, did we vote on it, or just talk about doing it? At this point, it's, this is the way it is.
Procedurally, members of the council, I mean, I can feel that for you. It's really up to you, as you approve today's agenda, if you want to do it that way, or move it back to earlier.
What do you think, Mayor? What's your, what's your opinion of it?
Well, and I guess I can just restate what my motivation for moving in the first place was, if that's, would be beneficial to the council. I was approached with several members of the community that said that they were unable to get here at 5:15, when we generally have our citizens' comments as one of the first action items. And then, I would also state that by putting the citizens' comments first is not putting the citizens last, but it's putting them first. Because the way I've seen this play out is when members of the public come, and they present their comments, a lot of times, they're rather lengthy, and they have a lot of statistics involved, and a lot, oftentimes, those comments are made just minutes before we're supposed to try to take action on those items as a council. Okay, so, when I say by putting you last, I'm putting you first, what I'm trying to communicate is we need more time. I think it's putting us in an arduous position as a council when those comments are made just before we're ready to take action, because oftentimes, we just can't digest all of that information and make informed decisions on your behalf. So we totally, I think Mary Elizabeth stated it best, you know, we all have to be good receivers. In every interaction, there's a sender and a receiver, okay? Receivers, it goes both ways. For us to be good receivers as a council, oftentimes, we need time also to digest that information and make a good decision, so we can address your concerns accurately. Because oftentimes, I'm gonna be honest, I mean, your points are very valid in a lot of cases, but it's kinda like this information dump. I don't know if ever, anybody's ever done a study on what the effects of information dump, I call it, just minutes before somebody's ready to make a decision? I'd like, I think that would be an interesting study, because I think it's really difficult to process things, and especially, a lot of the things we deal with are more complex and involved. So I think in fairness to the council and our ability to make informed decisions, it would be better if citizens, we post our agendas on Friday, right? That gives you, the members of the public, an opportunity to look at our agendas on Friday. You have all weekend, and I think most of you probably spend time looking at our agenda and researching different things, and then you come with your proposed changes, or I guess, issues, whatever they may be, and then you bring it forward to us. We just don't have the time, I think, to do our job correctly and efficiently, is what I'm thinking. And that's really my job as the mayor, is to create an environment that we're efficiently making decisions. And I just don't feel that we're doing a good enough job. When we get all the information thrown at us, and we gotta turn around, try to process it mere minutes again, before we're ready to make a decision. That's my thought process on it. That, and allowing people to get here later in the evening, so, that's my thought.
I'm okay with it, as long as, as long as everybody else is, but I guess, it just caught me by surprise that we were running it already, so. I think we just, let's, let's try it out, see what happens, I guess.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so, that being said, if there's nothing else, I guess I would like to entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda with the changes and corrections we just mentioned.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we have no public hearings tonight. We shall move on to our reading and approval of our minutes. The first action item that we will need to take is the, the meeting minutes, and we'll take these individually, are, the minutes from September 9th. If you recall, we had a request to revise or change the meeting minutes. Annette Watson had made that request, and Becca and I via email, and I guess, I'll just bring it back to the council to take action, to see if that's something you want to consider, or if we approve it as is.
Is it, is that correction stated in the, in the minutes, in our, on our?
Yes.
It is, it is in there? All right.
So the minutes are basically a synopsis of what's said. They're not word for word, and I guess, you know, this hasn't come about very, if ever, very often, if ever, but as a synopsis, you know, we're just, we don't have to say everything word for word, so if somebody has two pages, I just get a little concerned that this then will become, I mean, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of extra time for you to go back and have to listen, and somebody's time, and now redo them, and now it comes back to us. I, I guess, I, is the context the same as it was when you listened to it again?
Pretty much, I added maybe four words to it.
Okay. I guess, like I said, if there's, you know, this is just a synopsis of what's said, not word for word. So, you know, I suppose that people have concern about it, and that's what was said back on the recording. I just don't think we should get in the habit of constantly changing, or changing minutes.
I would, I would agree with that. You know, we're, there's no quotation in there that we quoted exactly what was said. And I don't, I don't want it to be an open door to every time that we put the meeting minutes together that somebody says, "I didn't mean it that way, I don't want it written that way," and that could just get spiral out of control.
Well, I guess I agree with that assessment by both Councilmember Delix and Solby. You know, we encourage citizens' comments, but I think let it be probably a learning experience. Choose your words correctly, and we're not gonna go back and change things, so. I guess with that, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from September 9th, 2025, as is, without the proposed changes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we have the meeting and approval of our September 23rd regular meeting minutes from 2025.
I'll move approval of the regular meeting minutes for September 23rd.
Are we gonna, aren't we gonna do the condensed minutes of 9/9, is that what you're doing right now?
We already voted on that, didn't we? We took action on that.
That was regular.
Just the regular minutes, we gotta do the condensed, too.
Oh, I did, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. Yeah, we had, you gotta do, okay, those consent, sorry, I got ahead of myself. You were, we, now we gotta take action on the condensed version of those same minutes that we talked about from September 9th, 2025. Sorry about that.
I'll move approval of the condensed minutes from 9/9, the original, not the changed.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, now we got that straight. We have, we have a first, or a motion and a second to approve the September 9th condensed version of those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Now we can move on to the regular meeting minutes from September 23rd, 2025. And we already had, oh, yeah, we did have a first, I think, didn't we? Yeah, just need a second on that.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the September 23rd, 2025 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, and now we have the condensed version of those same minutes from September 23rd, 2025.
I will move approval of the condensed minutes from 9/23/25.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the September 23rd, 2025 condensed version of the minute, meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. We shall move on to our consent agenda, which tonight consists of the audit of city bills, our gambling reports, we have a pay estimate, number one, Joe Riley Construction for the E7 Street project, pay estimate two, from the Joe Riley Construction, E7 Street, pay estimate, Project One Construction Incorporated, item F, the raffle license report, item G, the Morris Transit report, item H, the SCMC donation from the Fire Department, and our last item is the Morris Public Library Board meeting minutes from September 10th, 2025. And I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve those items on the consent agenda. Once again, Jeff is here to answer any questions you may have on the two pay estimates, and I'll just bring them back to the council for any action or discussion.
Where's Jeff, is he in here? Jeff, just basically in line with both estimates being paid according to the contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
See that we're, we're first estimate for two?
Payment for most of the underground storm sewer, and then there's probably a payment for the granular and aggregate bases that are gone in. There shouldn't be any concrete work, I don't believe, yet, that just started this week, so.
Okay, yeah, I seen that, it was, okay. Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
I guess I don't have any questions.
I don't have anything else on that, no.
All right. Hearing none. We have a first and a second to approve the items on the consent, consent agenda. I'll just ask for, I'll just ask for a voice vote on that, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is, before us is our petitions, requests, and communications. We'll just move to item A then, which will be the Tourism Board Marketing Recommendations, and I guess I'll ask Becca maybe just to touch on that.
Yeah, so the Tourism Board met last week. They discussed advertisement for the Holiday Stroll, which is on 12/6/25 here. So it looks like they're gonna be having sales with drawings for Chamber Cash and a Chamber Christmas gift. They're gonna have a free movie shown in town, sponsored by the Chamber, Santa, out at Hudson Inn, and bike or truck rides. So the, the Tourism Board approved sending it and recommending to council a tier two, which includes social media ads, blogs, digital, and print. And then, they also looked at Click Content brochure estimate, so it's a foldable brochure, little, I should've brought it tonight, but basically, a little pocket-sized map of different places to eat, things to do, different things like that. So Click Content would put geographic designing and content development for a total price of $2,400. So both of those were approved to be recommended to council.
Is this a one-time brochure? I mean, like, so that'll give us the one, whatever's here in that moment? Or will they be able to go back and update it every year?
I'm sure they'll be able to update it, I'm sure it'll be a smaller cost. This is probably an initial getting it all set up cost, but we didn't ask that question, I guess.
Well, I see that they have events on, that's why I'm wondering, and who do they contact to find out? I mean, are they working with, like, Chamber, or the different organizations? To figure out what to put on there, or are they just?
So they, they work kinda with all of it, so even with, like, our calendar. The gal that does our, the calendar with the Yodo stuff, she, she's polled, before Yodo came on, she polled a bunch of different things that are going on in the community.
We just don't wanna go through all the work of having somebody do this, and then missing, like, oh, did anybody think to add this to, you know what I mean? So hopefully that they're covering everything.
Yeah, they're definitely gonna take a look at it. That was the one thing, they have some businesses listed in this brochure that we had looked at as our inspiration, and it was like, well, how do we, how do you pick those? And just to make sure we're not forgetting people. So the Tourism Board decided they'd let Click Content do their thing, get it all done, and then have the Tourism Board take a look at it.
It wouldn't surprise me, just because of events change and dates change, that this wouldn't be a repeated one. But theoretically, the city would have the rights to the content, obviously. So it wouldn't surprise me if this becomes more of an annual.
Which you'd want it to be, an annual.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, if you're putting events and things in there. And then, where, any idea where this goes? Did the Tourism Board talk about where this is going?
Yeah, we were thinking hotels, businesses, out at the campground. I don't think of any others, but those were the ones that we thought.
I think we always have sporting events that attract people, and I think they just need to go there, too.
Yep.
There's all kinds of tournaments all weekend, most weekends, whether summer, fall, winter.
That's a smart one, mm-hmm.
So maybe connect with, even community ad, to see.
You would need some form of, like, weatherproofing, though, for something like that, if they're gonna be outside.
Depending where they are, and like, if they're by the concession stand, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Just throwing it out there.
But yeah, that's a good point.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Any other questions, or else we'll entertain a motion to approve?
The only other question that I have is, they obviously came up with four that they heard on and decided on two. What was the reasoning for the other, to pass on the other two?
The, so the website application review, they just did that. They just looked at what their, what their application stated, because we've been getting a few that come to us after the meeting, and they want, you know, their event is within the next month.
Sure.
And it just, so we're looking at changing the wording there. And then, there was just an agritourism exchange. The gal from Explore Minnesota that had come out and talked to our group, she sent it to us and said, "If anyone wants to go to this, is anyone in your group going to this?" And nobody is gonna go. So that was that one.
I mean, I don't necessarily have any other comments, so with that, I will move approval for the Tourism Board Marketing Recommendations, as, as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, good discussion. We have a motion and a second to approve the Tourism Board Marketing Recommendations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next item we have before us is kids' fire prevention donations. We had forty different businesses that came forward and donated $3,550. And I guess I would like to thank personally, I have all the names of those businesses here, but I'll, I'll just, before I read all these off, I'd like to just bring it over to the council for action, and once we take action on it, I'll recognize these particular businesses. It's nice, very nice gesture.
I will move approval of the kids' fire prevention donations.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the donation for the kids' fire prevention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'll take just a few seconds here, but I want to recognize all of these businesses. I think it's the least we can do, is to give them a verbal shout-out and say thank you for all the donations that we've received. First business was Ameriprise, Corey Seifert, Bachman Welding Incorporated, Bonanza Bean, Dakota Bank, Denko LLC, The Dental Depot, two different Edward Jones, actually, four Edward Jones locations in town. Edward Jones, Ken Swenson, and the other three. And then, we had Ingubretson Sanitary Disposal, Flugal, Helseth, and McLaughlin, Hartland Motors, InfoLink Wireless Incorporated, John Riley Construction, Johnson's Grain and Feed, Lawn and Driveway, Paul Watan, McGinnis Appliance, Inc., Midwest Finance, Mittens Chiropractic, Moore Plumbing and Heating, Morris Auto Repair, Morris Pairing, Morris Diesel Service, Morris Dairy Queen, Morris Fire Control, Morris Grain Company, Morris Lumber and Millwork Incorporated, Morris Seal Coat and Trucking Incorporated, Mundell Financial, Old Number One, Otter Tail Power Company, Peterson Funeral Home, SCMC, Superior, Town and Country Supply, Wilkins Industries, Prairie Ridge Hospital, and Spring Valley Farm. So again, I just wanna say thank you to all those businesses for contributing. We really do appreciate that. Okay, we shall move on to the ordinances and resolutions, part of our meeting here. And again, I just want to let members of the public know, just so, going forward, this is how I'd like to see things work. When you get a chance to reach out to us over the weekend with the lead-up to our city council meetings, if you have some things you would like us to address, please email us ahead of time. So that gives us some time as a council to digest that in writing, and then we can do a better job of representing your concerns, okay? So that's how I see this working, and it's gonna take a back-and-forth between us to communicate that way. So, that being said, and also, I'd like, I'll start every meeting from here on in asking the members of the city council and the staff if they've received any written communication with the lead-up to these resolutions on tonight's agenda. And now would be the time to communicate that, or if you would like to represent or communicate any kind of issues or concerns that were raised by the public. So knowing it's gonna take a little bit of time for everybody to get kinda used to this, but I think it'd be, it's gonna be in everybody's best interest if we can kinda work, work this out this way. So that being said, was there any communications from city staff that anybody received on any of the proposed resolutions, Carolina, that you know of, or? No, none? Members of the council, have you received any correspondence, no? Okay. All right, well then, what we'll do is, the first resolution before us is a resolution accepting the Emerald Ash Borer Response Plan. And I know Sue is here, I see, we also, would you like to come speak to it? You sure can, otherwise, we did have a, a presentation we received as a council, so. I think, I think it's fantastic, I don't know how it turned out with the county, but, that one good?
Yeah, we spoke to the county commissioners this morning.
Okay. That was good, we get the whole county and the city and everybody. Perfect. I think it's a good, good deal.
I also do, I think it's, you know, I wanna thank them, the Tree Board and the city staff that put this together, you know, if we don't get out in front of this, it could, could really diminish a lot of our canopy in the town. It, this is a very extensive plan, well put together, so, you know, a shout-out to those that were involved in it, so, you know, I would move on the resolution accepting the Emerald Ash Borer Response Plan.
Agreed, very, very good. Lots of effort and time and energy and research went into this report, so that's super appreciated. So I will second that.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second, accepting the resolution, accepting the Emerald Ash Borer Response Plan. I'll just ask for a roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Solby?
Yes.
Corrells?
Yes.
Goldison?
Yes.
Miller? Mayor Waller?
Yes. All right, resolution, next is a resolution authorizing task order number four. And I guess, Ryan, maybe you wanna just come up and speak to us? Maybe just pile, we'll take action separately, but we'll just... Maybe just pile, we'll take action separately, but we'll just do one at a time.
Either one.
Either one.
I hope you wanna do it.
You can speak to both of them right now and then we'll just.
We can do it one at a time, that's fine.
That's fine, okay. I'll just make you get up again is all, okay. Part of your wellness program, right?
Yep.
Alright.
So first task order would be task order number four. This is the full reconstruction of Fifth, Fourth and Third Street between Columbia and College. This is along where the H R A is planning on building the apartment buildings, so there is a sizing issue that we're trying to deal with. And this is also where you have some sanitary mains running underneath residences. So, part of this contract, we're also including in some pre-televization of the sanitary system. Get a better handle on where some of the services are. You know, talking with your staff, they got a good idea on some of it. Some of it is, is we think it'll be money well spent to televise it, know where some of these houses have to reconnect to or we have to put the lines to. So, um, I know Russ and Ryan were excited to maybe get rid of a problem area with those sanitary lines. So this is a local project, so it would be going through your assessment process.
So that would be an assessment, that portion of it? And you're thinking, so that'd be on the north side of Fifth Street then?
I'm not good with northern towns, I'm sorry.
Columbia, between Columbia and College Avenue.
Yeah.
Fifth, Fourth and Third.
Yep. Okay.
Columbia goes right by the school.
We, we shouldn't have to go into college or Columbia much.
Just, just on the street.
Just a little bit to tie in and it should be, where they left those projects, it should be, they were thinking ahead, so. This would be for next year construction. The H R A is, last I heard, they were planning constructing about a year from now. So the goal would be to be done and out of there before they take action, their full work built in there.
Rebecca, you have anything to add to that?
No, that's, I know we're looking at both the two different projects, one on the west side and that one, and I haven't talked to Ryan or Russ lately, but it seems like that one might be more of a immediate need. To get that one done first.
So this task order is just for the engineering services to see?
For the project, yeah.
For the project, yeah. Okay.
I didn't know what you're doing before you start, so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing task order four.
I'll second that. Any other discussion from, uh, questions for Ryan at all or?
No, I don't.
Oh, Zach? Okay. Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution authorizing task order number four. Uh, I'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please, Caroline.
Councilmember Miller? Gallicson?
Yes.
Corrells?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf.
Yes. Alright, resolution authorizing task order number five.
So this project is, it's an exciting project. The city had gained transportation alternative funds, which are grant dollars, but it is having to go through the mid-dop process, so it has, already has a state aid project number assigned to it, so there's a few more people to review and sign and approve it, but it's a relatively simple project. It's over, what is it, four some miles of trail and it's gonna be reclaiming what's there. We'll probably add in a road inhibitor. I've done that in other trail projects to help preserve your, your surface and paving. There's a few minor slope issues that, um, we'll probably address, you know, Russ and Ryan were pointing out a few areas that just making sure you have the proper clear zone, you know, safe area on the edges of the trails, but it's gonna impact a lot of your trail system. I think it's gonna be really nice. The, there's a few segments of your trail that are not included. Grant County is gonna be doing a project and the city was gonna work with them to have, have your trail connected with their project, which makes a lot of sense since they're gonna be already working in that area and changing some of the grades, so.
Stevens County.
So, sorry.
I was gonna say.
Like, wow.
I was gonna say, that's a.
This is exciting.
Yeah.
Woohoo! Okay, where, so what parts?
By the bridge area down there.
The fifty-nine on the path where it's bad sloping and it gets all full of gum?
That part isn't there.
The one that comes out of Urch Avenue?
Yep, so it's where they're gonna redo the road, cause they're gonna redo the road by, you know, where it connects both, both the lake, both the rivers.
Oh, that bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that area, we were leaving that just cause when they tear it up, it's gonna get wrecked anyway, so we're just gonna do it when they do theirs.
So back to, is anything gonna be done underneath the bridge connecting?
We're, we're, we talked to you about that, um, the last meeting that we sat down, and I think we were gonna look at what could be done.
We're, we're gonna do a little bit of extra surveying in there to figure that out.
And this is the one where you receive the grant and the donation?
If you can, something that's part of the.
Do you have the breakdown and all that works?
Not with me.
Okay, it's not a big deal. That's just, this is the project that we received the grant and then of course the donation from River, okay? Got it. Alright.
What's the, what's the timeline, what would be the timeline of construction? Just in my head, that trail gets used a lot, spring and summer. So, just curious of what the timeline of that looks like.
Right now, we would be trying to bid it out in probably late January with a early construction. It, and we'll have to put some.
Obviously weather dependent to get that.
Right, well, you got road restrictions, all the things, right?
Yep.
But we can also put some parameters around it that once they start on the project, they have so many working days to get it done.
Sure.
Because it is used, you don't need it ripped up all summer. And honestly, I think everybody would enjoy it if it was in the beginning of the summer and they could use it for one full season, so.
Yep.
Well, I know the, um, U M N does their Tin Man, don't they use part of that path?
Correct.
So that's usually in early May.
Okay.
They do a small triathlon.
We, we can maybe do a start date after, if you have any other events. I mean, you can.
I mean, that's kinda their big one. That might be something to communicate with, um.
Thanks for letting me know.
Yeah, that they, that is one thing they do is their.
Yeah, the R F C, R F C would be.
Yeah, the R F C manages that or puts that together, so. Yeah, I don't know, it's just April and May, early May, will they change, will they change?
Early May.
It's early May.
That first, first Saturday.
Yeah.
I mean, real, realistically, you know, we talk about road restrictions, they don't get going right away in early May. It's probably gonna end up being late May, June, as realistically, which are good paving. You know, the weather's good for paving operations at that time, so.
Thanks for the information. Any other questions for Ryan on task order number five?
The only thing that I would potentially, and I don't know how this would work as, as city, right, but in my regular nine to five working construction, liquidated damages is a big one, right? So if that gets worked into the contract, speaking to your timing, right, you have X amount of working days, right, like that, that is also a way of, of handling some of that, so.
In standard. We do have liquidated damages.
Perfect.
Another great project, getting that all redone and paved, uh, the bike path, as you said, Zach, it's very well used, so I'm gonna go ahead and move on that resolution authorizing task order five.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second approving the resolution authorizing task number five, order number five. Uh, once again, Caroline, I'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Gallicson?
Yes.
Miller? Solby?
Yes.
Corrells?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf.
Yes. Alright, next before us is a resolution approving an airport land lease with Bradley Feichenberger, D B A Feichenberger Farms, and I'll have Becca speak to that a bit, please.
Yeah, so, um, this is a little piece of property, um, on the end of the runway. Um, so when this, when this first, uh, came to be and the first land lease with them, a deal was made for this piece of land, um, that they would take on paying the taxes and not paying rent in discussion with the previous manager and the Feichenbergers. Um, it was decided to kinda just leave the contract the same as it had been. Um, this piece did not go out for bids as there is no access, um, to the land, like, they're landlocked. They're the only ones that can farm it, so.
This is, this has been that way for quite some time.
Yeah, so.
Um, I will move on the resolution approving the airport lease with Bradley Feichenberger Farms.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second approving an airport land lease with Bradley Feichenberger, de, uh, doing business at Feichenberger Farms. And once again, I'll have a roll call vote on that resolution, Caroline.
Councilmember Gallicson?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Miller? Corrells?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf.
Yes. Alright, we have another resolution. The next resolution before us is approving an airport farm land lease with Matthew Hewitt for the twenty twenty-six through the twenty twenty-eight, uh, period. And I, once again, I'll have Becca speak to that, please.
Yeah, so we went out for bids for both the hayland and the tillable. So we got, um, three back for tillable, two for hay. So Matthew Hewitt, um, was the high, high bid on both of them. So the one, um, we did three years for the tillable, five years for the hayland. Um, so with that, the, the five year, um, or the three year for the tillable, uh, next year will be two fifteen per acre, two twenty and twenty-seven and two twenty-five and twenty-eight.
And then you gotta step up, uh, price each year, I see now there. Went up like ten dollars.
Eclation.
Yeah, he was the one, he was the only one who had a five dollar increase.
Okay.
Um, the rest, um, M T M Farms, their price was one ninety-one per acre for all three years. And Freitenberger Farms did two oh five for all three years.
Okay. Alright. Any other discussion for, questions for city manager?
I'm sure it's pretty straightforward. Um, I will move on the resolution approving an airport farm land lease with Matthew Hewitt for twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-eight.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second approving an airport fa-farm land lease with Matthew Hewitt for the time period twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-eight. Uh, and I'll ask for roll call vote on that, Caroline.
Councilmember Miller? Gallicson?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Corrells?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf.
Yes. Okay, uh, item F, resolution approving an airport agricultural lease with Matthew Hewitt for the time period twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty. And once again, Becca, I'll let you speak to that.
So that was for the, for the hayland area. Um, so we got two, one from him for sixty dollars per acre for all three years, or five years, I'm sorry. And then, um, Theodore Henin, and he was at thirty dollars per acre for the five years. We went five years on this lease, cause they, um, try and put more work into it, um, and take a little bit better care of it when it's a five-year alfalfa and, and things like that, so.
Am I looking at the wrong one? Cause they, did they both say twenty-six to thirty?
I think the, um, I think the memo accidentally is there twice, but the.
The actual.
The resolutions are different.
Okay.
Looks like we improved on that on both areas, so I'm under, I'm gonna move on the resolution approving the airport agricultural lease with Matthew Hewitt for the twenty twenty-six, twenty through twenty thirty for the, uh, alfalfa land.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second approving an airport agricultural lease with Matthew Hewitt for the time period twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty. And once again, I'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Solby?
Yes.
Miller? Gallicson?
Yes.
Corrells?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf.
Yes. Okay, the next resolution is a resolution authorizing the issuance and awarding the sale of general obligation tax abatement bonds, series twenty twenty-five A, pledging for the security thereof, tax abamments and levying a tax for a payment thereof. And we have Nick from Ellers here and he's gonna come up and you get a presentation for us, Nick, and I'll just turn it over to Nick.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and the public. Uh, Nick Anup with Ellers and Associates, financial advisors to the city of Morris and engaged to help on this bond transaction. So in September ninth, council held a public hearing on the authorization of debt to fund the new municipal liquor store construction. That evening as well, the council moved to award, uh, construction bid to go ahead and proceed with the project. They also authorized proceeding with a competitive sale of bonds, so, uh, a, a sale that would be soliciting bids from municipal bond marketplace and placing up to one point six million dollars in debt financing for the project. That debt financing would supplement about a half a million of liquor store cash that the city had accumulated over the past several years. Um, and the debt was to be structured over the course of fifteen years, that's the repayment term, in a level amortization. And we provided some estimates about what that might look like, uh, estimating just under a four percent interest rate conservatively based on market activity over the summer and about a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in annual debt service costs that would be expected to be paid for from the liquor fund through operations of the liquor store. Uh, in that time since that period, uh, we have assisted the city in going out and getting an affirmation from Moody's Investors Service, a credit rating agency. They had previously provided a rating, it's like a credit report, that is circulated to the bond marketplace ahead of the sale to give them an indication about the creditworthiness of the city of Morris and its financial history. Uh, they affirmed what's called a double eight-three rating. It's a rating that the city has held, uh, for about in, uh, two years. Uh, the city was upgraded recently by Moody's. Uh, it used to be at a lower category. Just for some context, a triple A rating is considered the highest rating, uh, for any kind of a municipality, uh, corporation or any, anyone else that's issuing debt placed out in the marketplace. Um, a double A one is the next highest, two, then three, and then they go into single A categories and on and on and on. Uh, this is considered about the, the median or just above or better than median kind of rating for a city or a county, uh, and, uh, a very good indication that the city has where we call to make the repayment on the debt. Um, we also helped prepare an offering document to go ahead and facilitate the solicitation process. as a form of, kind of a prospectus, to give the bu- potential bond investors appealing for what's being pledged as its security and the, again, the history of commission of the city of Morris. Um, and then today, we opened, uh, competitive bids on behalf of the city and are here to tell you about the results and, and who bid and, and what the potential interest costs will be, and present that to the council for their action to vote to, uh, decide whether or not to proceed and accept the lowest bid. Uh, we got three bids on behalf of the city, uh, from three different firms, uh, two of which are, are kind of fairly local. They're national firms, but Baird was the winning bid, the low bid, so the lowest interest cost. Uh, they're out in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. They actually represent, uh, what's called a syndicate, you know, essentially twenty-two other financial institutions all kind of pooling together under one bid. Um, they came in at just under a five point, or a, sorry, a three point five-three percent interest cost. Um, context, our estimate is just under four percent, so a favorable result. Uh, Northland Securities, they're out of the Twin Cities in Minnesota. They were the next, uh, bid, about point zero three percentage points difference, so very close, uh, but no cigar. Uh, and then the highest bid came from Raymond James Associates, um, at a three point six-six percent, uh, interest cost. So between the, the low and the high bid, only a difference of, uh, thirteen basis points or point one three, uh, percentage points between them. So, uh, pretty tight spread, good to get, uh, a couple of different bids, so we can see some differentiation, and, uh, obviously, accept the lowest cost, you know, to lower our potential debt payments in the future. Uh, applying the low bid from Baird, um, we were able to actually resize the principal amount based on the financing costs that are involved in the transaction, down to one million four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So that would be the outstanding principal amount of the bond if the council does move ahead and accept this, uh, bid from Baird. That will still pro- provide the same amount of funding for the project that was anticipated in the pre-sale authorization. Again, this is, this is going to supplement a half a million dollars of cash that the city is going to put into paying contractors for the project. Uh, the final true interest cost calculation, so when we take all of the interest payments, the financing costs, and, and boil it down into a present value calculation, it equates to three point five-four percent, so you can think of, that's our, our true cost associated with this, uh, bond transaction, you know, akin to your APR interest rate that you could get on a home mortgage or, or some other conventional loan. Uh, our annual debt service cost is going to be one hundred and thirty-six thousand, uh, six hundred and seventy-four. That's the average annual cost. It'll fluctuate a little bit per year based on the, the amortization, but that'll, that's the average over the fifteen years. It's, uh, just under five thousand dollars less uh, than what we were projecting in the information I presented to you last month, um, and wholly based on the lower interest rate of, of the bid from Baird. Um, and just to put some context in, you know, the history of the operation here in the community, on average, operating surplus of the mun- of the liquor fund, so after payment of all the, you know, operations throughout the course of the year, the kind of free cash that's available at the end of the year is about a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, so we're, uh, the future debt cost is gonna be below that annual threshold, and, and the city's typical operating surplus is gonna provide about, you know, a hundred and forty-three percent, or one point four-three times the amount necessary to repay the debt. So, we're, we're fairly certain that the city's going to be able to wholly depend on its liquor fund. Um, and you have additional cash that you have saved over time, additional working capital available as a reserve as well, so, um, really not anticipating any kind of, uh, problem with the liquor fund fully supporting this debt over the fifteen years required for the repayment, so. All that said, there is a resolution, uh, before the council. There was a draft that was to... Just if you noticed, in review of that, there's a lot of blanks involved. Um, when we go out to the municipal, municipal marketplace, um, their bids only last for twenty-four hours, so they, they reprice their interest rates every single day, so that's why we had to open bids this morning, and that's why the blanks were included in your resolution. Your bond attorneys have populated those blanks and provided a, a printout, uh, version of that resolution that has, uh, pre-populated everything that the result of Baird's bid, um, should the council choose to move ahead and adopt that, except for lowest cost to the result of this competitive sale. Um, that would lock everything in, and, um, subject to your award, we do anticipate closing on the bonds in, uh, just a few weeks, November fifth. That's when the actual money from Baird will be wired into the city's account, um, in, in exchange for the, the bonds and the future repayment that you're pledging to that. That's all I have for the presentation. I know there's kind of a lot to go over. I'd be happy to address any questions of the council or the people here at the city. Thank you.
I was glad to see we had some competitive bids, and, alright, rates, that's always good.
Absolutely, certainly the lowest one. Um, and I'll, I'll admit, we were conservatively estimating our interest rates, but this came in, you know, even more favorable than kind of our benchmarks, so this is a, this is a good result. Obviously, the Fed taking action to reduce their interest rate, and, you know, not, and I know there was shutdown that's going on, but, um, part of the shutdown, it actually induces a flight to quality, is what we call it, and it actually makes municipal bonds, uh, from cities look a little bit more attractive than treasuries or other types of fixed income, uh, investments that these same investors would purchase. So, you know, there's obviously some drawbacks to a shutdown, but this might have been a little bit favorable in this case.
So we hit the timing right, is what you're saying?
Yeah. I don't know if we can do it again, we'd get the same result.
Not sure we had much to do about that.
No, absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Lucky we can control what we got going on here, Zach. Any questions for...
I, I don't have any. It's pretty much just what we were, we were talking about earlier. We just have now, we have the, uh, the bid in front of us. Um, with that, I, I, I would move on authorizing the issuance and awarding the sale of one point four seven million dollars of general obligation tax abatement bond, series two zero two five A, pledging for the security thereof, tax abamements, and levying a tax for payment thereof.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second, authorizing the issuance and awarding the sale of general obligation tax abatement bond, series twenty twenty-five A, A, pledging for the security thereof, tax abamements, and levying a tax for payment thereof. And I will once again ask for a roll call vote on that, please, Caroline.
Councilmember Galton?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Miller? Corrells?
Yes.
Mayow.
Yes. Okay, uh, we have our city managers' news, uh, man- city managers' reports and recommendations, and our newsletter. Take it away.
So we'll start with, um, projects. So Seventh Street is a little behind schedule. Um, they finished putting pipe in, and we'll be starting this week on curb and gutter. Um, Hillside, the reclaim is complete. Iowa Ave, that was a project, um, in twenty twenty-two, and so they, um, hasn't been closed out, 'cause a- after they did the final lift last year, there was still some things, uh, that we disagreed on. Um, so they, they did some fixes to that, um, and so that should be done. Um, I'll be meeting with, um, staff and the engineer to make sure all the other stuff on the punch list is complete, and hopefully we'll be able to close out that project. Um, the liquor store, we had our groundbreaking on September twenty-fifth, so things seem to be going smoothly so far. Uh, the Wells Park bathroom, they were finally able to get the plumber in there to lay the pipes, so we waited quite a while for plumbing permit. The building inspector said to just kind of go, start going through there and taking pictures, as they were about twelve weeks out, um, at the state, so. He's, he gave us the go-ahead to have the plumber continue, so, um, after their air tests, uh, they should be able to lay concrete. Um, last week when we talked, uh, that should be starting this week, so we'll see, um, how that goes. Some upcoming projects, so parks, we're looking at shutting down our bathrooms starting this week, so obviously the weather's starting to get colder, so with this, we're gonna start shutting down some bathrooms. They'll start over at Chiswick Field and shut down over there first. Um, utility projects, so looking at the different utility projects for next year, we will be having, um, one of them. Um, you approved a task order a few meetings ago for the West Side, um, and then tonight we looked at, um, around Fifth Street, so we'll be deciding on which one of those to do and, and have a project come to council, um, probably before the end of the year. And then the next, um, item, we'll have to, I'll ask for, um, a motion to, to move forward with. Um, so the park board meeting, we were approached, um, and asked by Eric...
Steklen.
Thank you, um, to paint the inside of the van shell, van shell. So, um, I hope yours have colored on there, the printed ones or not, but, um, so there was a few different options. Um, so one, um, all is just, the bottom part is different, so one is just white, one is, um, a gold, and one is a green. Um, the majority of the park board, um, are wanting to have just the gold on it, leave the base white, um, but they are all in favor of moving forward with letting them, um, paint, uh, the van shell and, and upgrading that. So we're asking for an approval, um, from the council to allow Eric and his bandmates to paint the van shell.
When would the timeframe be? Obviously, we're getting into the cold season, so...
The park board talked about, if you prefer, actually get it done like, not like...
This before freeze-up here, you're thinking?
Well, that's what they're hoping for. Um, I've got, I'm gonna try to put out a, a little, uh, I'm gonna try to pull in some money, like, do like a little donation then, try to gather some funds, and so try to get that done.
You must be Eric?
Yeah, I'm Eric.
Okay. Hi. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, um, but so, so yeah, I'm, I'm gonna try to like, pull in some donations for the community, and then see if we can get some cash. And then, um, they wanted me to be purchasing, came from Ace Hardware in town, just so that the paint is available in case we have vandalism, or we need, we want to get it easily, they don't have it now, so, yeah.
Hopefully we get some good painting days here before against the cold.
Right. Um, I, what I'd say is like, I, we're gonna take a look and see what paints are gonna work for it, and then I gotta look at the paint specs and the temps and everything. You know, my hope is that, yeah, that'd be awesome if we could get it done this fall, um, but if the weather doesn't...
Cooperate, yeah.
You know, if it needs to be like above sixty-five or whatever, around twenty hours, and that doesn't happen, then it's...
Then it'll be enough spring.
So you got a bunch of crew that's gonna help you with this project?
Yeah, I mean, I got a few bandmates, and then I was gonna put a call out to other folks that volunteer.
Careful when you're up on a ladder.
Yeah.
Alright, any other discussion? Uh, thank you for, uh, stepping up with that. That's, I like the design that I see. I don't know, council, thoughts?
Yeah, no, I think it's great.
It'll make it pop. I like, it looks, it looks good, yeah.
We were actually playing a show, and we had some video of it, and the, the gold, the, the lights from above were reflecting off of the dust that's currently down there, but it was kind of like, it made the dust kind of green gold, and I thought, oh, that looks, that looks slick, and just, uh, why aren't we painting gold?
Do you want us to take action on that right now?
Yes, please.
Uh, I guess I'll entertain a motion from the council on that, then.
I guess I would follow through, or, my thought is, I'd, I'd adhere to what, uh, park board's recommendation would be there, so following through with what there is. So I'll make that motion that, uh, absolutely get it painted, but follow their recommendation for it.
I'll second.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion and a second to go ahead with the, uh, um, park board recommendations, uh, painting the van shell by Eric and his band, bandmates. We have a motion and a second. I'll just ask for a roll, uh, excuse me, a voice vote on that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alright, paint away.
Wonderful.
Keep going.
Um, as Nick stated, our bond rating has, has stayed, um, at double A three. Um, they stated that we have a strong financial performance, are maintaining what we have, and have been consistently stable. Um, the tree board and I met with the county this morning, um, talked about, uh, Sue did her presentation. She did an amazing job, um, like she did here, um, and then still hoping to have more conversations with them as we continue to move forward in this, on place to hold all the, the wood as this, um, comes into, to our community. And then the last thing I have on here, um, Stevens County sent out an email. They'll be having their annual consultation and partnership meeting on Steven County Oy Boa settlement funds on October twenty-third, from two to three. So this is to share updates on how the funds are being used, discussion on substance misuse priorities, and needs in the community, and to encourage collaboration between counties, cities, and community partners. So, they wanted us to share with the city council, um, if anyone wanted to attend.
Okay, any questions from members of the council for our city manager from her report? Hearing none, we shall move on. Uh, the next item before us is, uh, mayor and city council, um, portion of the meeting. We'll begin with board updates. If anybody has anything from their various boards they'd like to share, now would be a good time. Okay, I don't really have a whole lot. SCIC board meeting was postponed, I guess, till a later date, so. Uh, anything else from any members of the council? Hearing none, we shall move on to the written decision on the administrative appeal. Um, you should have all received, uh, copies of that. Of course, uh, I think emailing, uh, otherwise here, copies of this are also available for the public. Um, we do not need, uh, we're not required to read this aloud. Um, but I guess what I'll need from the council is to, uh, enter, entertain a motion to approve, pending any possible changes that you may have, if you've had a chance to look it through, uh, if you think you need more time or anything like that, it's, but now would be the time, uh, to help us entertain a motion for that.
I will move approval of the written decision on the administrative appeal.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second, uh, to approve the written decision on the administrative appeal. I'll just ask for a voice vote on that, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, other business, um, we have the added Fall Mayor's Recap. I guess I'll start. Um, October first, last Wednesday, I went down to a Fall Mayor's meetup. There was about forty mayors from across the state there. Um, we started the evening with a tour of the land, Minnesota Landscape Arboretum, that was down in, uh, Ch- Chaska. If you've never been there, it's really quite something to see. It's a twelve-hundred acre parcel. It was gifted to the University of Minnesota several years ago. Um, I was really impressed. It's something, really. And we had a guided bus tour. We just kind of drove around, looked at all the different things, and this time of year was kind of cool. They had a lot of the fall stuff, and, and so if you'd ever, if you've ever down in that area, look it up. It's right off County, or, uh, yeah, County Five, I guess it'd be. And it's a busy stretch of road there. That's the only downside, is trying to get in, in and out of the thing, but, uh, from there, we went to, um, um, dinner. We had a dinner and a program later that evening. Um, it was at the, uh, uh... later that evening. Um, it was at the, uh, Winchester and Rye Restaurant in Victoria. If you've ever been there, it's kind of a cool little place. It's a sports bar type atmosphere. My only complaint was it was really not the best environment for acoustics-wise. Uh, pretty hard to converse, and, uh, we did have a guest speaker that came in, uh, Katie Pratt. She is, uh, works for the, um, Minnesota Department of, well, she's in the Minnesota Department of Administration building, but her particular position is she's the Director of Collaboration and Dispute Resolutions, and her topic was on de-escalation strategies for mayors. So I found it rather, uh, informative, to say the least. I think a lot of the mayors around across the state, uh, I think maybe can benefit from a few of her ideas, so, uh, it was very, very good. I was glad I went. I got to network with, uh, several of the mayors there and just kind of pick their brains and what's going on in their various cities, so, uh, it was good. Thank you for sending me. I enjoyed it. So that's all I have. Uh, we can move on to the work session date for Fresia. I want you to speak to that.
So, um, we've been talking for the last, uh, probably over a year, um, about the possibility of Fresia hooking up to our water and sewer. Um, so we have, um, have gotten a user agreement together, and we'd like to have a work session to kind of go over that with the council to see if there's questions, concerns, um, things we should be thinking about, things if they, their concerns about different things. Um, they'd like to obviously start working on this sooner than later, so our next scheduled work session isn't until December thirtieth. So hoping we can try and find a time, um, sooner than that to sit down and have a conversation with them. Um, maybe just to note, our first meeting in November is, uh, Veterans Day, so we'll have to pick a different day for that, too, so, um, but yeah.
Are you looking at something here in October?
That would be preferable, um, if it works.
Are we having a work session? Are we going to just meet like we did previously with two council members and them? I mean, I think the last time we met, it was myself and council member Miller?
I think it would be good, as it's getting, um, more finalized, I think it'd be good to have a full council work session.
Okay.
But that's, you know, if, if you want just to have a committee, but I think it's important for all of you to.
Well, members of the public can be there also.
So we're, I think before we were talking, just, weren't we just talking water? Is it now water and sewer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so obviously we're gonna need staff there, like Russ, Ryan, I can.
Yep.
I know your schedule gets, this time of year especially, gets pretty haywire.
Yeah, that's okay. We'll make it work.
Anything specific with you, Kim, that does or does not work?
I think it's always easier to do after a meeting because we're already here, but that doesn't always work with everyone.
So maybe do a work session after the next meeting?
If that, unless it gets too much for everybody, but it's just already been, the night's been taken up.
I don't think I have a ton of, ton of things for the next, right now, but.
Unless other people are opposed to that, but to me, I'd rather just do it rather than finding the right different day.
Mm-hmm.
I'm okay with that.
After our meeting on the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that works.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Got it. Okay, I think that's all we needed there. Uh, now we can move on to our citizens' comments portion of the meeting. We have three people that would like to approach the council. First would be Annette Watson.
So first of all, I do want to thank the council for allowing citizens' comments, so thank you. Um, I want to comment really quick on how you said people could email you ahead of time and give you guys a moment to read them. It is possible, but I have not seen it happen in my experience. For example, on the question of changing one sentence in the, uh, meeting minutes, right, I emailed you two and blank copied the rest of the council. So everyone did have possession of that, where it didn't have to be a discussion. You could have just already gone into the notes, read that it was one line and changed it without the, uh, discussion that you had last time. So I have emailed it. You also turned to the council today and said, have you heard anything from anyone in the public that they would like to state something? And I know for sure that one of the gentlemen sitting here, I received an email sent to all of you, and he put my name on it as well, and so I do know that he had concerns that nobody brought up tonight. So it can be a problem of somebody checking their email to be able to know whether or not, you know, at the end of the meeting or in the middle of the meeting, there is a particular comment about this object. Also, last time when you spoke, uh, it could be a misunderstanding of my ears, but I heard you say one person came and talked to you. Tonight you said many people came and talked to you, and then you proceeded to say that it was for the benefit of us, but then you talked about you. Like, you, um, hear the numbers, and, you know, it, it, it makes it harder for you to make a decision. But I approve, I am very happy what Brian Solvi has said in the past, and that is, you know, if there is an issue where you don't understand, you can always push pause. You could ask the question of someone here. You could delay to the decision, so it doesn't necessarily have to be for the benefit of the people. Um, I also said last time that you could move the meeting. For example, you could move the meeting to six fifteen and have the public comments, you know, at the beginning, you know, just as we have in the past, so that we feel like we're heard before you actually go into your decision-making time. And sometimes you'll hear that people comment, and they are talking about other people's comments, like, yeah, what he said, only I would add this. So that does give the benefit of everyone in the room talking about the same thing at that same time. Um, I, uh, still believe that when we speak about citizens' comments, that it has to do with the matter that's at hand that day, and has to do with that decision. So I asked the question, or want to ask you the question, have you thought of having two separate public comments sections? So I would remind the council that you guys changed your rules so that people would have to call in, you know, like we were talking tonight, like, hey, I want to speak, I want to speak. So you actually know who's gonna come before the meeting starts. So you could have a regular one where it's ordinarily everyone's at the beginning, but then that special person that calls in and says, hey, I real, I, I won't be able to make it on time, could you please put me in? That you could put them in after other business, and it would be irregular, but it's an option for them to choose. Because even tonight, the people who are speaking, none of those people that you said exist that want to speak came tonight that are different from the regular people who speak during city council meeting. Today, if I had been able to speak, I would have talked about task order five, uh, but only for clarification issues, and that is, the task order itself says we accepted a grant and we have a benefactor. And if that particular task order had written, uh, like, I would have suggested at the beginning, could that task order write down who, um, what the name of the grant was and who, um, was giving the money, so that as a reader of the packet or as a town person, we would know, um, or we could ask ourselves the question, is there any money left over? You know, is there, there's a few thousand dollars the town has to pay for this, or is it completely covered? And just being able to say that and have it written down in the task order that we would know, uh, so that it's completely covered, or it's mostly covered, and that would, um, let us know. And so that would have been my suggestion today. So it'd also add about budget. As a city prepares next year budget, I too can see many needs the town has, and I see that sixty percent, sixty-six percent of our budget is what the state provides. So I am, you know, always cautious because if they ever are unable to pay that sixty-six percent, we are in trouble. So this week, uh, my, um, son was look, and I were looking at a picture of a castle, and he said, Mom, why is it broken down? And I tried, like, oh, yeah, well, once upon a time, like, this castle, like, that wall over there, it was standing. And then I stopped and I thought about this town, because we want to build things that are good, um, for our community, good for our children, good for ourselves, but if we don't have the finances to continue the things that we already have, then we will end up like that castle that's trying to, you know, be grand and provide, you know, great stuff, but we just don't have the resources. And while I was writing this paragraph, I looked down and saw the library, the library board's, you know, fall letter saying, you know, we need finances. So I know our town is, you know, suffering when it comes to money, so I wrote down, use what you have to maintain our security and safety and the security and safety of the town's employees. Please be mindful of expenditures that we can maintain them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Lisbon?
In my retirement, I needed something to do, so now I attend park board meetings. I was warned to learn at the last meeting that the city shop needs to be replaced. Five million dollars was floated. If heaven forbid something happened to someone inside the city and we needed legal assistance, certainly that money would not come out of the public works budget. Yet the city manager and the city council have been taking funds from the library acquisition budget for legal fees, not just associated with the director, but with city errors to the tune of thirty-seven thousand dollars. You're spending my money. You're hiding how you're spending my money. The city needs a separate line item for legal expenses to be transparent. My real fear, or an additional fear, is that in two or three years, when the dust has finally settled on some of this, yes, someone will use the library budget, being in the red, to find a way to punish the library director. I would also say that you have not answered my question that I asked two weeks ago. It said in the city manager's report that the city manager and two members of the city council met with some members of the library board. I would like to know who those people were and what was said, and that's what I asked two weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you, and now we have our city attorney, Joe Glasserud.
Thank you.
Would like a floor.
I'll time myself.
Don't spoil all our fun, Joe. Oh, by the way, this is a four-minute battery for the clock.
You're up. Oh, that's three hours. One second.
I'll time you, Joe.
All right.
Anyway, concentrate.
Joe Glasserud, Morris resident. Oftentimes in public service, we only hear the bad and, uh, don't hear the good, and that's natural because people don't go out of their way to come in and say how happy they are. Uh, but I want to take a moment to thank Teagan Peterson in particular. As you know, she is the Assistant County Attorney, which means she's also the Assistant City Attorney for Morris. She's done a lot of work in preparing the draft nuisance ordinance that the council has been considering, and the purpose of that draft, uh, is keeping some of the particular aspects of the existing ordinance and adopting, uh, modernized aspects of, uh, current model ordinance from the league of Minnesota cities. When nuisances come up in the community, the ordinance is intended to make the process of addressing them straightforward for our city staff. Uh, the process is not as straightforward now as it could be. The council already heard the ins and outs of what's changed in this draft, uh, from Teagan in, uh, the last work session, so I'm not gonna go into all the details here, uh, and whether you adopt it or not, that's up to you. Um, up to you if you think it's a good idea. But I want to be clear that no one's ever asked my office to persecute city residents or anything like that on nuisance issues. Our city residents just want basic health, safety, and comfort addressed. So again, thank you to Teagan for the substantial amount of work she put into the meeting, that request of the city for drafting an updated ordinance. I also want to make a point of thanking every public servant in our community, whether you're with the city, county, state, or federal. Thank you, because I know from experience, when you only hear the negative, it can be extremely demoralizing. And thank you to everyone who sits on a council or commission or board of local government or in our nonprofits. It's necessary work. It's not always fun. In the nonprofit space especially, they're finding it difficult to fill board seats. The only solution is for people to get involved, and I hope that in robustly discussing the issues of the day, we as a community aren't driving people away from civic involvement. Now, let me turn to something that had me unhappy as a member of the community, so naturally I'll use this, uh, platform to, uh, speak up a little. Traffic in our residential neighborhoods. I've definitely seen some speeding and erratic driving lately when I'm out and about. Uh, and so I just wanted to make a short public service announcement. Probably everyone has that experience of running late, uh, or just not being as careful as they could be driving, but most of us also have the experience of a near miss with a driver who should have been more careful. I know it's tempting to put the pedal to the metal when you get a few blocks without a stop sign, but please be a considerate neighbor. Remember there are pedestrians out there, including kids. Getting there a little faster isn't worth the risk to ourselves or anyone else. Thank you.
And I think you did it great within three minutes, Joe. Way to go.
He's a trained professional.
Hey, and thank you, Joel, for that. I appreciate it. All right. We'll move on to any other informational items that anybody would like to, uh, bring before the council. Now would be a good time. Hearing none?